Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance at a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Kearns?
Present.
Councilmember Bowlin? Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Milla Wambway?
Here. Uh, next item on the agenda is recognition and appointments, Madam Clerk.
Uh, we would like to recognize Michaela Kent, who was present at the meeting today. If you could please stand.
Okay.
And Michaela is being recognized as a new appointment to the Citizens Beautification Committee.
Okay, thank you so much for your service, Michaela. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have, uh, four people registered to speak. Um, before we get started, we did not receive any emailed public comment prior to the meeting. And after you read this, your statement, we'll start with Gary Lambert, and then to follow Scott Steinling.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lambert.
Oh, yes, sorry. Um, I needed to read my statement, sorry.
I've got a memorization.
Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased.
Okay. October twenty ninth, City of Bloomington had a gun buyback. According to Channel twenty-five, the Panograph, and some letters to the editor in the Panograph, it was a resounding success. As someone who was there, that was not my experience at all. I thought I'd get there early. I got there about a quarter after nine, like thirty-five minutes in front of the start time of ten o'clock. And by that time, they had a queue line. In the paved side highway there going how far went? Half mile, mile? I don't know. But you went in on the left-hand side, turned around, come back on the right-hand side. So, at that time, I was, I don't know, maybe a hundred cars back in line? And I stayed there until probably a quarter after eleven, eleven-thirty, something in that neighborhood. And I moved up perhaps ten or twelve cars in that hour and fifteen or twenty minutes. And I could see that I was going nowhere. You literally had people trapped in there. There was very soft ground there on the, uh, west side of the road. Finally, a few big trucks went through and made a path. People on the, uh, east side of the road, they literally were trapped. There was nothing but an open field there, and there was a curb on that side that most cars wouldn't want to go over. Plus, you had people backed up bumper to bumper. And when I was leaving, they had a police car and blocking all any more people getting in line. But as the time I was sitting there, there were two phrases that came to mind. Now, I don't think, I may be wrong, I don't know. Most of you up there have not been in the military. The two phrases were used very commonly. One was snafu, situation normal, and I'll be polite, all filed up. And the other was, uh, foo bar, filed up beyond all recognition. So the city literally took the day away without any planning on how they were going to be handled on channel, Cities ninety-two point nine. For any of you that were not there on November second, they wrote an article about it. And you should go look at it, and it had a picture of the lineup of the cars. Otherwise, you wouldn't understand what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Scott Steinling, and then to follow will be, uh, Dale Navziger.
Scott Steinling, um, my concern is with the leaf collection. It's, uh, when the city gets around to it, and they rake them out on the street, in the street, when they're supposed to be on the parkway, we get a big wind and it redistributes the lousy leaves. And so the people that have hired it done, they get to hire the person back and do it. Also with the, uh, they plug up the storm inlets. And I realize the city doesn't really care about that, but I do. It floods the streets. And, you know, I wish the city would really, uh, think what is really important because the infrastructure is absolutely terrible. One, uh, neighbor was walking, their father was out walking, and, uh, they made the comment that these, uh, streets are terrible. And they tried the sidewalks, the sidewalks were as bad or worse. And so they went back to his, their son's house. That does not speak well for the City of Bloomington. As you enter Bloomington, it should say, welcome to Bloomington, over the potholes, rotten roads, high taxes. You know, interact at your own risk. I had a pothole on the City of Bloomington Street years ago and did eight hundred dollars worth of damage to my car. My insurance company paid it immediately, less the deductible. The City of Bloomington, I never did get it. And, you know, that does not sell well. I mean, the kind of taxes we pay in this city, for what? Nothing. Uh, the, the, um, garbage collection, that used to be included in your property taxes. Now it's added on the water bills because normal charge five, so Bloomington charged five, then it went to seven, then it doubled to fourteen. Then they went up to the, uh, automated carts, then it went up again. I don't think the City of Bloomington is satisfied with anything. No matter how much it gets, they're, they always want more. And, you know, I realize in certain places, the, uh, curb line is level with the grass. And I think the city really better wake up and do something about it now rather than waste the money on something like this. It's all in whose ox is being gored. And I really don't appreciate it. I really don't. Um, but yes, people really, I've even had people come into Bloomington. I haven't brought up a word, and they said these sidewalks and the streets are terrible. I said, you're preaching to the choir. Also, the, um, ADA law was in effect in nineteen ninety. There are still some sidewalks that are not ADA accessible. There was a, uh, grandmother several blocks down, uh, several years ago, that her granddaughter was junior high granddaughter's wheelchair. Yeah, I saw her lift that thing up over the curb. At the time, Jim Carsh was Public Works Director, and I went down, I said, you're out of your mind. She must have called Jim Carsh City Hall because they were, the city was out there in the next morning to put that sidewalk in. Thank you.
Next?
Next up, we have Dale Navziger, and then, uh, lastly, Serena Fish.
Good evening, all. Um, I was gonna talk to the mayor after the meeting, but while I'm here, I'm gonna take an opportunity. I am having a real problem in town with incredibly loud motorcycles. And I know how hard it is to measure sound and all the laws and all the stuff. But just Sunday, there's a motorcycle pulled up to the intersection there, and just as loud as he could, five gears past us. We couldn't talk until he was completely out of sight. I'm at the corner of Main and Lafayette. I hear him on Veterans, and that's not bad, but I mean, that's a mile away. Some of them do it on purpose. A lot of them do it on purpose. And I know it's hard to ticket, but maybe if they ticketed for unnecessary noise at the officer's discretion, do something. Because since we're doing nothing, they're just escalating, straight pipes. I mean, and this, now they have the stereos playing louder than the music. And I'm seeing earbuds in the guys wearing ear protection because it's so loud. I was at the corner of Main and Lafayette with a customer. And the motorcycle pulled up so loud with the stereo so loud, and the song that was on the radio was W A P, if you know the lyrics to that song. And I can't say it here. It was very embarrassing. This is blasting while they're stuck at the stoplight. We really need to enforce some of these laws. I know it's hard. I know there's more important things. But if we don't start somewhere, it's ridiculous. I have sports cars, they have stock mufflers, I have motorcycles, they have stock mufflers. And I ride reasonably and do things reasonably. At some point, you've gotta do something. I know it's hard. But come up with an idea. I have a motorcycle shop down the street, sometimes I have fifteen, twenty guys in a row. And you can't talk. You just stand there and stand there and stand there. You can't hear a word. It's all I got, real simple, other things to do, but take some, somehow they got it to start somewhere.
Thanks.
Last up is Serena Fish.
Good evening. My name is Serena Fish. Um, one of the things I'm involved in is I'm administrator for Westside Neighbors, uh, Miller Park Neighbors. And we recently had, uh, one of our meetings, and it was posted. I made sure both, uh, city council representatives, Ward one and Ward six, knew about it. I made sure that the county people knew about the meeting. It was posted that it was about property tax increases and also a potential increase in gas taxes, uh, utility gas. Uh, nobody showed up. We pay you all to represent us in this. So I conducted the meeting because I went to Kathy Michael. She made sure I had all the things I could do, uh, for deferments or freezing. I was able to help quite a few people, and we also kinda set up a thing where you tell this group, you tell this group, you tell this group. So it's really a big problem out here, people. And people are worried they're going to lose their homes. I got an increase on my personal property of twelve point eight seven percent. I know how to do an exemption, therefore, my exemption was frozen, or that was frozen. I had a, made a thirteen dollar, but it wasn't the property tax, it was the bank. People are deathly afraid out here. And nobody's talking about it. Nobody's doing anything about it. So I would at least like to go out and tell people what is available to freeze or homesteading, disabilities for, uh, veterans, disabilities for seniors, uh, freezes if you're a senior and under a certain amount. Three minutes is not long enough. Um, second thing is, there are three major events that are getting ready to happen. And I've gone to all the meetings, I've gone to all the layouts. We're talking about the redoing of fifty-one. We're talking about streetscape, and we're talking about connect transit. My question is, what are you all gonna do when they all start doing something at the same time? Because that is a potential problem. And I made it a point to talk to everybody at these meetings. Well, what are you doing with the city? Who are you liaising with the city? None of them had an answer. So good luck. The last thing is a positive thing. I'm sorry, I'm over. I'd really like to recognize Colleen Winchellin. Whoever made the decision to move her up in the department made a great decision. One of my residents in Westside had a problem, has continued to have a problem. She's gone to the hub, she's gone to the city, she's gone. I called Colleen. I know. I called Colleen, told her what the problem was, and she goes, do you want a sixty-five or a ninety-five? I said she wants a sixty-five. They'll be there next week. Guess what? It was. So kudos to Ms. Colleen Winchellin. Y'all made a great decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go and move to the consent agenda, and is there, uh, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Crumpler. Second by Councilmember Bowlin. I'll go on electronically, right? Looks like we have some issues. It's not showing up, right? Rocco?
Sure. Councilmember Kearns?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Aye.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda passes. No names to announce. And, uh, we do not have a regular agenda item, so we're gonna move on to city manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, four slides, one additional comment. Uh, right here, we have the, uh, updates for the, uh, leaf pickup. Uh, top left corner, Mo's Ricky, a cartoon character of him, uh, in the, uh, Public Works Department, Public Works Director, but the reason I point that out, YouTube channel, uh, has, uh, no, Mo's knows, uh, videos about, uh, leaf collection and actually plan on, uh, expanding, uh, those informational series to the, uh, community. So please, uh, visit the website, bloomingtonil.gov backslash leaves. Next slide. Thanksgiving Farmer's Market, uh, again, uh, this will be the first one that's inside the, uh, Grossinger Motors Arena, uh, inside the Coliseum. That's coming up, uh, this, uh, Saturday, nine to twelve. Next slide. Small Business Saturday, uh, first Saturday after, uh, Thanksgiving every year. Uh, stop, uh, and shop downtown for holiday specials, sales, new products, and more. Shop small all holiday season. Next slide. Once upon a holiday, uh, December first, from four forty-five, the holiday tree lighting. Uh, we were actually out there today, uh, taking advantage of, uh, the, uh, unseasonably warm weather to, uh, get the electrical system set up, but that will be on, uh, December first. And I believe that's it, correct? All right, uh, final comment regarding, uh, property tax, uh, just sort of a teaser, if you will, uh, walking through, uh, for the community's sake, uh, what's coming next. So next week would have typically have been our committee of the whole meeting. Uh, there is statutory requirements related to how municipal municipality treats, uh, taxation, property tax. And, uh, we will have, conduct that business, that statutory piece, uh, next week. So the committee of the whole is going to be changed to a special meeting, same time, same location. And then we'll, uh, conduct other, uh, uh, committee of the whole type of, uh, uh, items. I think we have two presentations. But then related to the, uh, property tax, uh, as it looks and yet to be finalized, uh, but it appears that, uh, the council will be bringing a, uh, property tax, uh, request, uh, that will be less than what is, uh, than what the community has, uh, heard about, uh, in the increase. And let me say that, um, maybe differently or clarify, uh, my comments here. Uh, we have seen, as reported, uh, that we have nearly an eleven percent increase in the valuation of the properties. And that's through increased property values of existing property. Also, a component of this is new growth in the community. So that's nearly eleven percent. If we would keep the property tax rate the very same as what it has been for the last several years. In fact, uh, fractional change over the course of the past decade. Uh, this council, previous councils have, uh, maintained that property tax rate, uh, for, again, the last several years. What it looks like in discussions and preparing, and again, not finalized, uh, that, uh, the property, uh, tax rate would be reduced by the City of Bloomington, not capture the entire eleven percent, uh, roughly eleven percent, uh, that we're talking about. In fact, uh, stay below a number that, uh, would not need a truth and taxation, uh, hearing, which would be five percent or less. And that appears to be the, uh, direction that we're headed as a city. Now to remind the community, we're only sixteen or seventeen percent of a total property tax bill. The majority of that is the sole source of revenue for our school districts, uh, Unit Five and District Eighty-seven, depending on where you live. But this council is also responsible for the library portion of that, which is part of that sixteen or seventeen percent. I know, and it's yet to be finalized, but, uh, looking at capturing a number that is less than the eleven percent increase that I mentioned previously. So you would potentially see a reduction in the property tax rate for the library as well. I know the council members get a lot of questions about that. We hear about that as well. We know that some of our other governmental, uh, partners have already reported or have had this property tax, uh, meeting, uh, publicly and wanted to share what is coming this next Monday on the twentieth, same time. Special hearing would be the title change instead of a committee of the whole. Thanks for letting me share that, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Gliese, and we all look forward to that conversation. And I think for the sake of brevity, we're gonna move on to, uh, other comments from, uh, council members. Councilmember Becker?
So just a quick one for everybody. Uh, I was out sick the last meeting after the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council meeting, and I did want to share one thing from that. Um, as I sit there, as you may or may not know, the Safety Act went into effect recently, and what people are seeing across the state or what they were looking at to analyze is, did jail populations change, both in number and in demographics? And did the number of people that were released, um, instead of held over, change dramatically? And across the state, there were some pretty big changes in a lot of places, but not in McLean County. McLean County stayed the same or very similar. And the, this was from, uh, one of the professors, I think, at Loyola, forgive me for forgetting which university, but the reason he sees that, that we didn't have a change, is because the Police Department, um, the district attorneys, all of the people involved in criminal justice in McLean County were doing it right before. So I just wanted to say thank you to them for the good job they're doing and let everybody know that.
Thank you, Councilmember Motney.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment as we approach this next week's discussion about property taxes. We have the opportunity to reduce our tax rate to keep the actual amount that our residents would pay flat. And if you look at the other revenue sources and their trends over the last few years, we're actually capturing more, just for example, in sales tax alone than the net of this property tax increase, uh, that we're talking about having. If you look at current economic indicators, you know, interest rates obviously are a significant problem for folks. It affects affordability for both renters and homeowners and those who are in apartments. Credit card debt has been increasing significantly. Withdrawals from 401Ks are increasing significantly. When you look at all of these things, and a special note with the library, reflecting back the last two years, the property tax increases taken by the library are significant. And as I reflect back to the decision made two years ago to make a significant investment in the library, I point to one specific thing. And that is a grant that the library was awarded, uh, for, um, contributing toward the building of the library, which is great. However, half of that grant was not used toward principal. It was actually used by decision made by the library board to effectively add back in scope in that project that had previously been cut. Uh, so I just bring these things up because I've talked to two different banks here in the last week in order to validate some of these things in terms of the reality of people's lives locally. And phone calls are coming in significantly asking what's going on as people are opening their EAV notifications and also seeing changes in their escrow. And also, again, the impact of, um, the interest rate changes, as people might have moved from one home to another and been completely caught off guard based on financial acumen as to the difference in interest rates when they were really just considering the difference in price from their prior home to their current one. Uh, so I just ask that we take this meeting discussion coming up with humility and understand the constraints that people are living in in this community. We have the opportunity to demonstrate empathy by putting constraints on ourselves, and I hope we will consider doing that.
Okay, Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, I would just like to draw everyone's attention to an event tomorrow evening, um, that's being sponsored by Not in Our Town. Um, it will be a brief from five to five-thirty PM, brief, um, vigil for peace. And it will be held inside the, the Museum of History in the old courthouse on the rotunda. Um, although this will be a, a vigil that will not involve spoken words, it will not be a silent vigil. Um, but rather a time where we're carving out some space for people to reflect and to, um, consider ways that they might, um, might express themselves without words. There'll be music, there'll be, um, an opportunity for people to, to have some space to, to perhaps, um, quiet themselves and be a little bit more contemplative. So I invite everybody to, to come to that from five to five-thirty tomorrow evening.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands, um, I am going to ask for a motion to enter into executive session in the section two C twenty-one of five ILCS one twenty to complete a semi-annual review and approval of executive session minutes. And can I have a?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Bowlin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Hendricks. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Kearns?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Aye.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. No names to announce. And council is entering executive session per section two C twenty-one, uh, of five ILCS one twenty to complete a semi-annual review and approval of executive session minutes. The room must be cleared during executive session. Council will resume the open session meeting following executive session. However, However, no additional action will be taken except to adjourn regular session. Okay?
Okay, we are now back in regular session and I'm gonna ask for a motion to return to open session and adjourn the meeting.
I'll move that we return to open session and adjourn the meeting.
Okay, council member Ward and then second by council member Bowen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. See you next week.